Okay, thank you. Well, we're a couple of minutes early, but everyone who is coming is here, so we might as well get started. It's good to see everyone. First thing I'd like to do is ask if there is anything needs to be added to our agenda at this time. Okay. Can I ask for motion to approve the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four agenda as submitted?
Move to approve.
Standing.
Thank you, and all in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Opposed? That's right. It's passed. Okay, then if I could also ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, three minutes, the pending deposited gift reports and the statistical reports as submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah. And all in favor, aye?
Aye.
This name, okay. Good, let's just jump right in then to our meeting. Say, we don't have anyone here for public comment. Okay, so we'll jump into Ben's report, maybe.
Bruce was gonna be here, but I don't see her and
Well, we're running a couple of minutes early, we'll skip over and jump right over to Susan for the foundation, if we could.
Thank you. Thank you, glad to be here at North Avenue Branch Library. Related to the foundation, our individual fundraising effort this spring raised a modest but notable amount in support of our summer internship, so we're excited about that. Related to grants, we have recently submitted a grant to the Virginia Commission for the Arts in support of the Gelman Concert Series. And as everyone is aware, we continue to focus on ECL efforts in the library. Those submissions are the Richard S. Reynolds Foundation, the Ben Zwanger Foundation, Dollar General Literacy Foundation, Harrison Family Foundation, and Universal Leaf Foundation. We are currently working on submissions for the Sheaburg Foundation as well as the Virginia Sergeant Reynolds Foundation. Looking ahead these next few years, summer internships are an excellent opportunity for corporate entities to get involved in education opportunities and early literacy work. So we'll continue to build relationships with that in mind. Does anybody have any questions?
Hey, great, sounds like things are going well there. Clay, we started a couple of minutes earlier and skipped over you. Thank you for joining us and appreciate, and you're not late or anything, so I apologize. If we get you to give a quick, kind of, report on the fact.
Okay, the friends just had their spring book sale several weeks ago, they made a little over eleven thousand dollars for this sale. And they're in, so have a meeting, not this week, but next, next week, and they're looking to see some new numbers on their, on their board. And that's basically all that have reported today.
Thank you, any questions for Clay about the friends? Okay. Then we'll jump into Scott's report for the administration.
All right, not much to add, I do want to point out. We had a really great National Library Week, there is a proclamation in the back of your report that celebrates and brings light to all of the things we did, there's a nice list of the things that we completed. So I'm happy to share that. I want to point out in the statistical report that our circulation is on track to surpass last year. We have another quarter left, and I think we're gonna see numbers that are as high as we've seen in at least ten years. And mainly this month, I've been tied up with the budget process, and there's a nice letter in there and worked with Bill and Chris on some meetings, and you'll get more information on that. And other than that, I don't have much else to add.
Okay, thank you, any questions, Scott? Okay. Garrett is not here today. And I guess I'll cover the advocacy when we get to the chair report real quickly, so we'll just jump right over to Chris on the early learning literacy, if anything you'd like to say.
So I'm gonna have to say something in May, I'm meeting with the team on Friday with Susan, so if you can wait a month, we can introduce the summer program and the funding and the efforts then.
It's in good hands, we know, so we have no trouble being paid.
But there's some real key pieces that will fall or will not fall, so I might have some really great news.
Okay.
Maybe let Susan say.
Now you're gonna make it harder to wait, you're throwing out the Okay, I'll jump right in, from the chair side. Scott's already mentioned circulation, things are looking good, and I think that's all very positive. We have already passed, I think, where we were in twenty nineteen. As far, I mean, on the, on the
We're real close.
On the monthly averages, I mean, we haven't
Yeah.
We haven't surpassed by three months, but we're on a, in fact, it looked like we're well past it, which is really big, that puts us back past pre-COVID numbers. And that sort of leads me to the whole pre-COVID issue from the, from my perspective as the chair, which is the funding side. And y'all saw the, the letter that, that I sent out on behalf of the board to the city council, actually for the mayor and coffee to the city council and so on. And you know, I'd like to start by mentioning that since when we send these things down, we have to be careful about the open meeting rules. Okay, so John has sent some of these things out, and you always see she puts a do not reply all, and somewhere in that to remind us not to. So we can't really discuss, I'd like to say first off that the reason we sent that out is we got the budget from the city, the preliminary budget, the mayor's proposal on it, and we weren't unhappy with it. And we, we thought that, yes, it was, we liked it, it did been more, but they did give us the positions to utilize the money that they gave us last year, so we, we had a problem with that last year, we've gotten past that a bit, and they gave us a, an increase to basically cover the increased labor cost, because with the collective bargaining, with other aspects going on here, the labor cost, VRS, I think, went up a number of different things, so basically they've put us at the spot where we're sort of at a holding even with the right number of people that they saw from the prior year. What that left out was we really need more people to do some of the things we want to do, we need more money to do some of that. And we are still really below where we were pre-pandemic, as far as the funding levels that we're looking at. So we wrote the letter, and I have to say, I sent it out, but I did a first rough draft, then Scott, Susan, Chris, maybe, I can't remember, looked at it, made some suggestions, we went back and forth, Garrett, I went back and forth, and so that was sort of a a product of what everyone thought, that wasn't just my thoughts on it, and I'd like to thank everyone who did that. And, and it was effective in that it got a response and wasn't an angry response, it wasn't an outraged response, it was a very pleasant, hey, we'd like to meet and talk about this. So Garrett is finance chair, I thought maybe would be able to go with, with us, Scott and I, we're gonna go down and meet with them with Link Saunders and Sabrina Hogg. Unfortunately, Garrett was family, and Chris very kindly volunteered to
Well, the next obvious choice was Sharon.
It was, and actually Sharon was invited also, and we, we got into a very tight time frame on this, so I guess Sharon, you let me know one morning it looked like a problem, and then later that day
And then I got to go.
Later that day.
We all had a great time, so thank you, yeah.
And we thought the meeting went very well, we went down for a forty minute meeting, I think, forty-five minute scheduled meeting, we're probably there an hour and ten minutes, fifteen minutes, Link was with us most of the time, Sabrina stayed and talked after Link had to leave. And the, the gist of it that I'd like to say is that I think that the city administration recognizes the value of the library, they see where it fits into the community. They recognize that the early literacy efforts that Chris is heading up have been very effective. They see the need to supplement what school systems do over the summer, but what they don't do over the summer, and some of we need to supplement it. They see the adult literacy that's valuable there, they recognize the COVID learning gaps and those types of things. And they understand the accessibility issues and things, so really, there was nothing negative in the meeting.
The most fun meeting you could have.
It really was, we came out of it, Chris and I, but Scott was guarded, Chris and I were happy.
Can I add one thing, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
You're good.
I took away, I had two great moments, one, and I've heard it from our foundations, they love that we are working with all of the partners in the space, so that not only foundations love that, the city wants to hear that we're good team players. The second, we're talking to Sabrina, and she says, I should mention, I'm from Queens, and growing up, the library was my second home. I love the library. Here is an important person, and she's telling us that this is something that's near, an emotional response is the best thing you could ever get, that was my high point, I
Those were two, those were two very important ones. And you know, I thought it was interesting, sort of building on Chris said about the teaming with different groups. I think this year, Sabrina may come back to us with some ideas for not necessarily additional cash, but maybe where we can get some additional volunteer labor and some things like that, and that's all really helpful, we still need the cash.
I, I think some people are gonna lose some money. You're, you're more savvy with this, but I, I think some people may lose a little money.
I'm very hopeful that either someone will get shifted over toward us, or that they'll come up with some additional money. We don't know how much, and I asked Scott this one, he hasn't heard anything more, but, but anyway, that went very well, and as a result of that, the meeting I guess I'd like to recommend that we not put a full court press on with our city council members right now.
Okay.
There's just we, this administration is probably doing everything that they reasonably can do right now for us. And, and there's no reason to get people worked up over something and, you know, spinning the wheels on this, okay? I think that we, we can do well with taking the budget this year. You know, considering it a very positive compared to where we were just a couple of years ago, and looking forward for really good working together. Chris had two very important points on the emotional, not the, the interpersonal side of things. I would say another thing I'd like to mention is that we got full buy-in from them on starting to discuss the budget, our needs and the budget in the fall, rather than right before the budget, and I think that's really important because when you go to them after budget's done and ask for money, that's almost impossible, it's very hard to get, we did it last year, we got some, but it's, it's very difficult. When you go right before that, they've already got their minds somewhat set, they, they've been planning this for a while, they're not, you know, doing this two days before the budget. If we can talk to them in the fall, we'll probably talk, start talking in August, I think, late August, September, something like that.
That's what they told us, we should do what they say.
Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds like, you know, so early fall, we hope to be able to get some, some real cooperation and and buy in on, on specific projects and where we need help with, with that nationally. So anyway, let's, if you talk to his council people, let them know that we've had, you know, positive meetings there, that we're hopeful that there'll be more this year, but that we're really looking forward to that relationship going forward. And then the final thing from the, from that meeting and sort of the focus that I've had in recent weeks, the CIP. They acknowledged that you know, we didn't get anything from the CIP this year, that the CIP is a I won't say that they said a problem, but that it's, it's got things in there that we're spending money on doing things like our master plan. And not inexpensive things, and then they said, and their view was sort of like, well, if we're doing these things, we should know that we're going down the road to that. And they agreed to just sort of look at that, work with it on that, they also agreed that we should be looking at the current branches and the needs in those areas and possible additional branches. We talked a little bit about even profits from a new construction going up and, you know, saying, well, as part of this, could you stay this or that, so these are all ideas that the facilities committee will have to start working on, all of us will, but they'll have to give some thought to, to some of that. Brent, I'll mention that I didn't use your name or talk about any specifics, but I did mention that one of our board members had run into some opportunities, and I don't know whether we're past those or not, but we really want to make sure the city knows that we have needs that are not being met right now. And we want, if opportunities arise, to be able to jump up. That we don't want to see a space that we can move to say, well, that's gonna take three years to plan it and budget it and so on, and have that go out from under us, you know, and so on, and they, they seemed responsive, wouldn't you say, Chris?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was very positive, so
Absolutely.
Anyway, we came out of this late Friday afternoon meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it really made my weekend, so I appreciate it, it was a nice one, one of the better meetings I've ever had with people in the city. Not this, excuse, of course. Anyway, so that's where we are, I think, on advocacy and from my perspective as the chair. Any questions for me?
Let me ask, was there any discussion about you said about, you know, expanding branches and, you know, filling holes and so forth? Was there any discussion about properties redevelopment and housing, Richmond redevelopment and housing has land around Richmond? And I don't see why there shouldn't be a conversation about some of that land being used for, you know, libraries and things.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense, and I think that they've opened the door for us to say we really maybe you know, we're not that far, so may, maybe, you know, north side near Chamberlain has, we're not that far from that area now, but maybe there's a need there, say, or maybe east end, once again, not that far from the east end library, so some of those may be okay where we are, but if we see an opportunity from the facilities to do a better job of giving access to those communities, and, and our, our Richmond redevelopment housing is definitely an option for that, just like any of the private. We talked a little bit about Scott's addition and people building in there, we talked a little bit about far south side, the, the strip going out, Bell Boulevard, that area, how there's some needs there, you know, just in light, we didn't get into a lot of specifics, but sort of those, the general comments. And I, I think what we got was we need to be prepared to say, here's here's some of our needs, here's some immediate needs, here are longer term needs, and, and we really should be on the lookout for opportunities to do things in these areas, and they're not, it's not cookie cutter, there's different needs in each area, they, they recognize that and saw, you know, I, I mean, I think that quick discussion, a lot of those ideas came out, it was, it was just one of those where Chris would bring something up, I'd bring something up, they
Bam bam, it was a true conversation, yeah, bam bam bam, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, they, they have left it very open to doing those types of things.
I just don't want, you know, right now redevelopment in housing is looking at certain places in the city where they are thinking about building things, and I don't want to lose those opportunities, if that land is available, or if there are properties that would be willing to, to put a you know, not a kiosk, but a space for, you know, a library in there built, you know, to include in there. So I don't, I don't know if there's can be a dialogue with the city about that, or
It absolutely can be, and it's one that Sharon, I'm gonna ask, maybe you sound like you've got some specific areas in mind there, which is, is great, I'm, I mean, I'm aware of what they're doing in some of those areas, I think if, if you and Janet and Gail and Ben get together and sort of talk about some of those, that can help us really think about, okay, here's an opportunity, because we can miss some of those, I mean, you know, we know some of the screen was, they asked us what branches were the most undersized, was how, how did they put it, most in, in need of expansion?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, and Belmont came up because it is our first
Westover Hills was
Westerfield and Belmont, too, because they're our two smallest branches, and they're in high, high activity areas of volume, and both of those branches are, you know, remarkably high for the size of the branch. But there was also that thought of, you know, can you do something in a thousand square feet somewhere? That's maybe only staffed, you know, in the evening hours, because that's when the population is, is back in that area. So I mean, they, they left it open for us to really look at how we serve the city. And if you stop and you look at some of the other municipalities that were measured against sometimes, Norfolk being one, you know, they've been very creative in the way they, they've done things down there with some of that. And look at the surroundings in Wrighton, Chesterfield, I was heartened when I said, we don't expect you know, to be building branches like Libby Mill or Kakahoe or some of those, and you know, they sort of pushed back to me with, well, maybe we do need to be doing this, so I, I thought that was nice. I'm not sure that we need that size branch too often anyway in the city, I mean, you know, we, we don't need to have nine branches of sizes and staffing and so on to do our job well, but they do see that investment's necessary, I guess, so.
I, I'm gonna interrupt you one last time and just echo what you already said, and what Scott said at the meeting. Scott is going to work on getting his pitch together by August, so key input from the trustees that your comment is timing perfect, we need to let Scott know everything as he puts it all together and plan.
Yeah.
I mean, and looking forward, I would think, just like you said, branches like Libby Mill, we need something north of the river and south of the river, at least, you know, something of that nature, where people can congregate and, you know, in larger spaces and do bigger things, you know, so down, you know, down the path, can we look at that at least?
We, we absolutely should be, and that's one, like, I, I think we've talked about having facilities committees sort of head that up with the idea, here are existing branches,
Right.
here's sort of overlaying that with population shifts and things, looking at you know, the is it better, for example, to put something between Westover Hills and Grand Rock? Or is it better to enlarge those two?
You've got other parts to sound, you know, Big East Highway and
I bet you say, as an example, Hall Street, Hall Street's a great branch, but it's it's, it's somewhat tight, too, and that area, I mean, I, I think I saw in yesterday's paper, they just approved another development at what, Forty Fourth Street or something, you know, and you think each one of these, you add three hundred departments, you're adding five, six, seven hundred people in a lot of those situations, you know, that's, that's really a lot, you do two or three of those, you've made a big difference on the demand at the library to service those areas, so I, I, I can't, I guess I can't say where they should be, because I haven't looked closely enough at that, and I think that's something development, the, you know, the facilities can look at, and we can look at some, okay, what do we want to do, putting that plan together as the whole board, but
Is there any, I, I don't know about, you know, legal restrictions or anything, but is there anything that says we can't lease property? You know, in, in spaces, you know, I'm looking at you know, you, you talk about all these apartment buildings and downstairs, I see so much vacant space, you know, and
And actually Sabrina alluded to either you know, renting, and I think she was thinking below market rates, maybe space, or being granted a, we'll give you twelve hundred feet or fifteen hundred feet or whatever in this new facility, maybe the bottom floor, maybe the, you know, who knows, whatever, but you know, for a period of time, sort of as a proffer kind of a deal, or as a, an amenity for the people in that area, just cooperative, so absolutely, we don't have to own everything that we, we operate at.
Yeah.
And I'll also mention, you know, essentially I was over in something at the Perkins Center, sorry, blanked out on the name, in Chesterfield recently, and I thought they had done a really nice job with the way their library in Chester sits right there and combines in, and I think
Okay.
I, I don't know if y'all have ever bended out, but there, the library is like across a walkway from a little cluster, the Performing Arts Center, and
Okay.
Little, and you know, that kind of a thing is something we should
Yeah.
be tagging into when there's something done, I mean, it makes really good sense. And anyway, just, just taking from what we see around us, like, I think Chris is one of the, we don't need to invent it, there's a lot that's been done, and stealing it's a good idea. So we can do some of that. Sharon did that?
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Other ideas? Okay. Finance Committee, Scott, did you want to say anything?
I don't really have much to add, we're just kind of in a holding pattern in the issues you detailed in your letter. Reiterate the points there where we had concerns, and the process is continuing, so I have a feeling, I think everything's supposed to wrap up in about two more weeks, so we'll have a budget at that time. But you know, overall, like, as you said, there'll be a four percent increase proposed for the collective bargaining agreement, they're gonna address some benefit situations. And for our budget specifically, we'll have some funding that we've requested for technology, so about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to replace public workstations throughout the system, so once the budget's approved, that would be funding that would go towards replacing workstations that are reaching end of life, so those are kind of the big details in the budget right now. And those should be wrapping up again in about two weeks.
And looking at the attached where we are on the budget, we look pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
And nothing stood out to me on that.
Yeah, we're at about seventy percent of spent going into the last quarter.
Yeah.
By the end of this month, we'll be mostly through, we'll be a third of the way through the last quarter, so we're tracking as we should.
We'll, we'll use it up, what we don't want to see is a hundred and twenty percent.
Right, that's right.
We're, we're, we're gonna make it
Yeah.
You know, the budget looks like this year, so. Okay, Gail, looks like you're the designated from the, you were back from the facilities, anything going on?
Facilities, well, I'm getting to the broken record stage about the Bookmobile Grant, they still have not established the twenty twenty five guidelines yet. I spoke with somebody yesterday about that and have no more information, unfortunately. Scott, you wanted to talk about your proposal from Gil? About
I don't know that we're ready to talk about that, yeah, I think we need to kind of work on that some more.
Again, my only thought about Sharon's comment is they want a plan to make these decisions, but they don't want to fund the plan. So it's a problem, they don't want to do anything until there's a plan in place, a master plan or whatever you want to call it. And I'm disappointed to hear that there's nothing in CIP for us here, so
I'll, I'll, I'll say, as they pointed out, CIP this year, between the ballpark stuff that they had to do, the schools commitment, that they're just
Crazy.
Fire station.
Fire station, yeah, the, the public safety building, there's just it's some, we're gonna have to push it, and it's not just gonna happen the way the budget slowly, oh, we come up, because there's just so many big things that you know, and I, I wasn't shocked at all, I'll put it that way, that we were there, I was actually pleased that they didn't say, yeah, you might as well take that off the table, because you're gonna be twenty years before you say it, they didn't do that, they were, you know. Chris, you thought maybe a little bit?
They went to a sensitivity training or something.
I'm the least knowledgeable person on that, so my read is not a very good one, okay?
So other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Emily, governance?
Just to say that I had not realized that the application for boards for our position was already open, but apparently it is, I'm going to check with boards and commissions today to find out the details on that and whether we've already received any applications, so I will have follow-up on that next time we meet, did you say that city council would be voting in, was it in May, okay, well, I will follow up shortly.
Okay, yes. City council will be voting, but we should be able to make that, I mean, we, we should look at it in May, before city council votes on it and make our recommendation to them.
Right.
They can do it without us, but we, we'd like to
Sure.
Yeah.
And I will get with, I'll let you know kind of a summary of what applications have already come in, and then if you do have any contacts that you wanted to encourage to apply, please have them apply or reach out to me.
We've got one spot definitely available.
One spot available.
And we don't know whether we may have a second spot.
I think that that spot has, is on the I think that that spot has, um, is on the. Yes. Yeah, so it's just one. But then if you do have any contacts. Um, well, we don't go by districts, but Barbara is in the third. So third, but then also, you know, we're not, we don't have any representation in fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth or ninth. I don't, I don't need names from the first second, um, basically.
I don't know if you. It's not, did you happen to ask the council people and were they at all helpful?
I'm sorry, I did not know.
Other questions on governance? Okay, um, I don't have any, uh, unfinished business, anyone? Jump in then to the new business for today. Um, and you'll see in your packet, you saw the, uh, lost material replacement fee and the, uh, lost materials. Materials default replacement cost, policy changes. I was a little confused when I first saw it and, uh, question Scott, so I'll, I'll tell you where I was confused, which was. What about the things that are inserted? Because this seems to deal with the things that are not. Uh, and Cersei, we get a flat replacement cost that includes. The cost of the material, the cost of processing, etc. So when they, they tell us, uh, this book disappeared, here's the replacement cost. That's the cost that we charge. Okay, so. Um, what we're just dealing with is the non-Cersei items. We're not changing anything with the, uh, the way the, the ones in Cersei are. So, uh, you seen the language on them? Any questions for Scott, uh, on that?
Can you just clarify what would, an example, if you have a non-Cersei item? So is this something that's not catalogued or?
So. We have a. Eight hundred thousand records in our online database. Uh, many of those, when we process an item in, we put the cost of that item into the record. So when you lose a book, we look it up, the cost will be there. That's what we charge you. There are many items that don't have costs because they were brought into the catalog from the old system or. Sometimes there are items that don't have a cost associated with them. So this table twelve ten will be a default cost, so. We know what to charge somebody if there's no cost in the catalog, so we've addressed that.
The replacement cost is not in Cersei, the item is in Cersei.
Right, the item would be in Cersei, but some of the items don't have replacement costs associated. So this would be. The default for when we have an item that doesn't have a replacement cost. It hadn't been updated in a while, so we. Removed some formats that we no longer have in the catalog and updated the costs of what. The average cost of what it is, since it's in the catalog. You want to be as spare as possible when we charge somebody the replacement cost of an item. And then we are, and then twelve nine, we had this policy where we would charge a processing fee. So you would not only get the cost of the item, but then we would charge you five extra dollars on top of that cost. That allegedly would cover the cost of processing the item. Um, in general, the cost of the item is probably, is the cost of what we charge to process it. Because we get our, we put the retail cost of it in the catalog and we're getting those items at a discounted cost. We don't know what that cost is, so we just use the retail cost. So any processing cost is built into that replacement, into that replacement cost that we put in there. So we're proposing eliminating that fee because it kind of adds. Insult to injury, if you've damaged something, and so we're not only asking you to replace it, but we're also charging you another fee. So we're just including that fee in the replacement cost. Does that make sense?
Fair enough, yeah.
I'm looking at things like CDs and DVDs. When you get the money back for the loss. We're not buying anymore, that was, I mean.
We're not really buying music CDs anymore. We're buying, uh, DVDs. DVDs are still a popular format.
How about the computers? What, if, if their losses, it would, would.
There's a charge in there for those, it's, I believe it's, uh. It's in another policy. Yeah, that's a separate policy. That's like three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the computers. So, yeah.
How successful are you at collecting?
Uh, we do pretty well. So, uh, we have a whole process of when we, you're talking about, so this would be like something's damaged. Somebody comes in and pays or they've lost an item. These are how we do that. If you're talking about things where people check things out and never return them, we have a process where we notify the patron throughout, you know, two weeks. Four weeks, six weeks, we mail them a notice and then ultimately what we do is we turn them over to the state for set off debt collection. So if someone, uh, hasn't paid us for items that they've checked out and never returned. We turn them over to the state and the state will collect and should they ever get a tax return, a lottery winning, a judgment against them. We will get paid for those items that we turn over to them. So it's kind of the. Uh, it takes a long time to recover it, but eventually we do get the cost of the item back. Um, so. That's the. End of the road when it comes to like collections, but that's a different topic. This is only for replacement cause. Other questions?
No questions. I'm gonna ask if there is a motion to remove policy twelve dot nine, the lost materials replacement fee. Because it's no longer relevant to our operations. Okay, all the pass. Uh, then I'm gonna ask for another motion to approve the revised policy twelve dot ten, materials default replacement co- uh, cost as submitted. Um, so you've got that. You know, quite behind twelve nine in there, it's just. Part of the same package, so, um, if I can get a motion to, uh, to do that.
Move to approve.
Check on favor, I. Okay, so that, uh, that passes also. Our next meeting is at Maine on May twenty-second. Before we adjourn, who asked for a, uh, motion to adjourn? Is there anything else anybody wanted to bring up or talk about why we're. In a spot where we can't actually talk with more than, uh, two of us, uh. I'd be happy to hear. None of it was bad, so.
So, um, our. Books sale went well. And I can report that we, um. Took in a little over eleven thousand dollars. I was not able to pretend the sale myself, so I. I hear there were lots of happy people. Um, but I don't have a full report because we haven't taken our expenses out yet. Our next board meeting is next Wednesday on the first of May. At five thirty, um, we have two new board members joining us, potentially two more. And that was it. I was gonna ask about the budget letter that had been kind of. Um, requested, um, or discussed in my ear, but it sounds like that is no longer required at this time.
Right, I think to this point, we, we just can ride along for a bit.
So that is, that is my report.
Okay, great. Let me, let me, this is, this is the second. Uh, friend sales since the new, doing it, uh, in the new A, right? It's gone, that's coming along.
Yeah, we.
Kinks are coming out a little bit.
We need a lot more volunteers to do what we do. Yeah, we, we, this time around, we did have, um, new volunteers, more new volunteers, which was good, but we need a. Lot more and particularly, it's been hard to get volunteers who are. Available during the day and capable of moving boxes of books. So that's been kind of the issue that. We've had, um, evening hours have been great and we've, um. Ben Hemelfarb was really good, the branch manager is really good about kind of coordinating and moving, um. People and activities around to allow us to give us a little more time in the auditorium. Um, to be able to make that happen.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before we, uh, move to adjourn? Sharon, yeah?
I wanted to say thank you to all who were responsible for the young adults event, uh, Saturday. It was wonderful. I bought my granddaughter and she had a ball and made me buy every book they had. It, it was set up so nice because everyone was at tables and the office went from table to table, so the. Kids got an opportunity to personally talk to these authors and. Ask them questions about who influenced them and things like that. And it was, it was a wonderful event. It really was. So thank you, thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, then, um, gonna ask for motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.